If we could stand up and rise for our pleasure agents.
Our pleasure agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could have a moment of silence to honor our veterans. Are there any veterans in the room this evening? If so, please remain standing for a round of applause. Any veterans? No veterans this evening. Thank you to all those that served. Preston, has roll call been taken?
Yes.
Dawn, would you like to do a peoners this evening?
Don Grace, DPW Director.
Brooke Hart, City Treasurer.
Kristi Kaya, City Clerk.
Ellen Glass, City Manager.
Pam Howard, City Council.
Krista Metter, City Attorney.
Liz Armstrong, Mayor.
Brad Dick, Mayor of Protown.
Tom Hicks, City Council.
Denise Miller, City Councilor.
Brenda Simons, City Councilor.
And I would like to excuse Jerry Link. He is absent here. We will move on now to the special presentations of fiscal year 2025, 2026 audit.
Good evening. My pleasure to be here this evening to present to you the annual audited financial statements of the city for your fiscal year ended June 30th, 2025. Once again, the city did receive on the highest level of audit opinion household, which is a blue identified opinion. So no exceptions, disclaimers, nothing too bad to report this evening. Like to start off with a few highlights, but I'll tell you, this, this report, you have a lot going on in the city. So if you may, as you're flipping through it, the, you'll see a lot of more funds than we typically have, but that reflects the activity here with the bonded, the paving projects, the water sewer projects, the special assessment districts, and we've had a couple years of that now. So just, you'll see, just it's, it's just kind of grown in the financial statements, but all good. The property tax revenues, which of course are your largest source of revenues, up 5.7% this year, and that's all taxable value increase. That's not a millage increase. The year before was a 7.3% increase and that, you know, the year before, we had that big inflation adjustment, so that's come down a bit. 5.7 is, is still pretty healthy and we like to see that, but not as, not as huge as the year before. Also, this is the third year of the public safety millage, which is in its own fund and accounted for separately now. State shared revenue, also a significant source to the general fund, pretty much flat this year, almost identical to the year before. That's the state and income tax that the state flex and distributes to the local units. Not good news for that going forward. I'm sure you've heard with the state budget, they're basically rerouting a lot of the state shared revenue money coming to you to roads and other things. So we're not projecting any big increases or any increases for next year on that. The city did do a nice job with the interest income. You managed to increase that once again. The year before was significant. You're taking advantage of the good rates out there, so, and, and, but you're still in safe investments as well. So we had growth once again this year, which again, we'll take that for as long as we can get that. Overall, you'll see that the general fund revenues actually decreased if you compared it to the prior year, and that's only because the year before, we had the American Rescue Plan Act grant funds. So you'll see a big drop, but it's not really a drop. It's really, we just didn't have the grant funds this year that you had in the prior year. The general fund expenditures, it actually stayed pretty steady from the year before. You spent a little bit more in capital outlay. Parks, you'll see a little bit of an increase. You did receive grant money on the parks, so the expenses were correspondingly up on that. The general fund added to the fund balance, and you did transfer money to the public safety fund, which was expected, but that was significant, $221,000, did you? So the public safety fund isn't standalone. It needs, needs a little help. So the general fund is, is contributing to that. So even with that transfer from the general fund, the public safety fund dipped into their fund balance $128,000. The mill building restoration, the year before, you received half of the $4 million grant, so that money is tucked away in its own fund, so you can see the activity in there. You spent about $300,000 last year on that, on the mill project. We added, we added quite a bit of debt, but we also paid off some debt this year. You paid off the 2015 water bonds, the Walmart property loan, you had like a fire truck loan, street line loans, so some smaller ones we are, are all paid off, so that, we like to see that. And then you added the West Ralston SAD and general obligation bonds last year. Ultimately, let's see, you spent about $2 million in the water fund and on capital projects, mostly the Lindenwood and the Southern, Southern Lakes Water Project. Lindenwood is, as far as the paving project goes, I think you only have about a $200,000 of that bond left, so that project is almost done. It might even be done now, it's after June 30th. And West Ralston, you didn't really start to spend money on that. You sold that right before the end of the fiscal year, so in the year you're in now, I would think that you're just getting into that bond money. So with that, that's a lot of numbers being thrown at you. If I can answer any questions, I'm happy to do so. Lot going on, but all good. You know, you're financially healthy, stable, you're doing exactly what you're supposed to be doing.
I think it's worthy to mention to you, Raina, the 33% fund balance is in correlation to our fund balance policy that the DA adopted, to have that hit that target between 25 and 30%, I think, roughly, so.
Especially with all you have going on.
Yeah.
And also, this is the first year you'll see the LOC is added, and that's in the back where we put the DDA financial statements, the LOC statements are in back now. And this year, it's only six months worth, and next year will be a full year. But that's worth noting that also included this year, along with all the other changes.
The reason it was only six months is because we had a full audit, because they were on a calendar year, but then when we switched them under the umbrella of the city, it was a six month.
Councilwoman Simon, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Good job, and thanks for hitting that target in the general fund. Looks really good.
Councilwoman Howard.
I don't have any questions, but the good news, it looks great, and it's good to know that we're ahead.
Councilman Dick.
No comments, thank you.
Councilman Hicks.
No comments, though. It's pretty good, thank you very much.
Councilwoman Miller.
Thank you very much. You guys are doing a great job. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you so much for coming, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to the city staff as well, doesn't happen without a little consideration. Thank you.
Does the audience have, does the residents have any questions for the auditor? Does anyone in the red, in the audience have any questions for the auditor? Thank you. We have no public hearings, so moving on to correspondence. Is there anybody?
Just, we just had the invitation in there for the ribbon cutting for the Laugh Pathway, which is exciting. Or the groundbreaking, I should say, so November 12th, 11:00 AM, so hopefully some of y'all can, can attend, so that information is in there for you guys.
We're going to move on to public comments. I see we have a public comment for the Laugh Pathway.
I'm happy to give an update on that, I'm on the Laugh Pathway board, I've been a part of that project for about 10 years. If many of you don't know about that, in 2018, I think there was a special election ballot that did not pass to raise taxes for the pathway. That pathway is Phase Two of a elongated pathway to go through Genesee County and Linden and connect Fenton. Phase One was Argentine to connect to Linden downtown for the walking pathway. This will be a mile and a half section from Triangle Park, which is right on Silver Lake Road to connect to Jennings Road, connect to Fenton, where the new Kroger will be going up. That event is scheduled for 11 o'clock on the 13th, so it'll be tomorrow. Just kind of a welcome, an update, and engineers, our engineers will be there to talk about an update of the plan scope and the project, planning commission, just to give everybody kind of an update on what that project ballooned from. Originally, it was about a $1.7 million project. As we went through COVID and we went through price increase after price increase and hurdle after hurdle to raise funding, it ballooned into about a $5.6 million project. So that's what was committed through a lot of hard work of City of Linden, City of Fenton, and Fenton Township working together. There was some equal money that was granted, there was federal money granted from MDOT as well. So, and of course, the Moss Foundation, I think we wouldn't be here without them kind of making the last final push and contribution. So, Choice One made a $500,000 commitment to the project, and we're going to put a shovel on the ground finally after about 10 years on this committee, so it's good to see it come through, so my kids can ride their bikes. So I hope everyone's excited about it, so we certainly are, so I hope to see you there.
Thank you. Monica Lerner.
Monica Lerner, 152 West Ralston Road. So first off, the American Legion Auxiliary is hosting a free one-hour workshop for dementia-friendly services. So almost 7 million Americans are living with some form of dementia, and over 200,000 of them are right here in Michigan. Up to 70% of individuals with dementia live in their own homes and are shopping, banking, and doing business out in the community, but they often encounter special challenges. So the free workshop is covering what dementia is, how to recognize it, the difficulties that people have living with dementia encounter in our community, simple ways that you can make the lives of our friends and neighbors with dementia less difficult, and no cost and low-cost dementia-friendly recommendations tailored to your specific organization or business. It's going to be November 25th, and it's going to be at the Masonic Lodge, and there's going to be two afternoon workshops, so that if people in the business community need to trade off, there's going to be one at 2:30 and one at 4:30. And I have flyers out in the front there. So I have spoke about this before, the corner of West Ralston and North Ridge has another eyesore trash there on the corner. It's been there all weekend, and before it was told that it would be addressed and taken care of, and it never was, just, you know, when the trash day came around, then it got picked up. So I don't know, you know, what the problem is. We have it published in the newspaper that the trash is not supposed to be out there, but, you know, nothing was done before, so here we are again. You know, why can't this be taken care of? It's the same, same property. And then I do have a concern on the consent agenda about one of the LOC things, but I don't know if I have to wait on that.
Go ahead and bring it up.
Okay. So the Chase Card Service, 2,23297, it just says LOC department charges. I'd like to know an itemization on that. Everything else is itemized, you know, on our financials. Why is that just home together? Thank you.
Thank you. For all public comments that were regarding the agenda items, I will bring you guys up right before that, that item on the agenda.
Do we need to try to? Okay. So I think the, appreciate the information on the dementia workshop, and appreciate the flyers and stuff, Monica. The issue at the corner of West Ralston and North Ridge, I know before the issue was they were cleaning it out and had, doing some renovations or something along those lines. I'm not sure if that's the same case now. We can, we can certainly follow up with that. And as far as the consent agenda, LOC, I don't know if you can pull up?
Yeah, I'm trying to.
Okay. So we can hopefully provide more detail tonight. If not, we can always follow that up, so.
Are you going to put it up now?
I think she's going to tell me. I think we have.
That's what I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I mean, like, I think you're, you're safe to move on if you'd like, and then when she is able to pull it up, we can always address that. Yeah.
Madam Mayor, do we have a date for the workshop? I'm not sure if Monica will get it for us.
November 25th, it sounded like, was that the case? Okay, thank you.
Okay, $99.87 was for Amazon, mechanical pencils, binders clips, water. Do you want me to itemize all? Snacks for travel. Plastic forks, mailing address labels, magnetic credit card reader, Pure Life pure hydrogen water bottles, I believe that's for travel. Another Amazon for movie day, there was chips, Frito-Lays, I believe those are just snacks for the movie day. That was 92, or that's included on that previous Amazon. Let's see. We did kitchen bar tool storage rack for $34, Halloween candy. We bought a new coffee maker for $478. And some of these, just for knowledge, we do get reimbursed from the county as well for bigger purchases. Chili cook-off, we had large paper plates, disposable plastic portion cups. That was $35.99. Chili cook-off, again, we bought plastic portion cups, no lids, mini containers for $15.99. Goodness gracious. Disposable clear plastic forks, this is all chili cook-off. Water bottles, I believe that's all for travel.
So mainly event-related for that month?
Event-related, yes. If you would like me to itemize it for the council, I can as well put it into paper form. We had a trip to Frederick Myers Sculpture Park. That was a charge of $634.50, but we get back that money and the people that go on that travel. So that looks like it's about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, just to clarify, you were issuing checks, the memo line, it's just really hard to put all of that on a memo, so anytime you need clarification, just let me know.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda.
I will make the motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Support.
Dick?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Simons?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
All right, so we are moving on to new business. Ordinance number 425 and ordinance amending section 154 zoning, housing-focused zoning ordinance amendments.
Madam Mayor, in your packet, you guys have a memo from city staff as well as Adam, addressing Adam's imposed memo dated for October 24th, which was also included in that code 127, city council agenda packet. During that meeting, Adam outlined the process that the planning commission went through, reviewed the detailed summary of the proposed changes, and addressed questions posed. To date, we've not received any additional questions or concerns or comments. The changes have ensured amongst all the city staff, it was communicated this would be returning for November consideration, and then, and there, there's also suggested motions for you all to consider, so that's where we're at.
Thank you. All right, we're going to start off with the audience this evening. Noah Morgan.
Goodbye, Noah. I'm a property owner in the city as well. We have a property 1013 Bridge Street, it's right next to Sloane's, and that is currently in a local service district, according to master plan. We bought the property in 2015, originally intending to clean the house up, sell the house, the day we bought it, somebody came to us and wanted to buy it, so we sold the house on a land contract. The house fell back in our hands in 2018. We leased the house out for three or four years. We had a really good tenant, he did cause a couple issues with the city that we tried to resolve, and finally we moved him out. We've had, relisted the house again for sale. The house was under contract, fell through, because it's currently in a non-conforming use to a mortgage company, so that would mean it's limited to a buyer pool who can only put down 25%, and they have to have a commercial loan. It wouldn't qualify as an FHA or a Fannie Mae Freddie Mac loan. So any of the houses that are currently along this local service district that are currently in residential use, if they go for sale, someone can't get a traditional bank loan on that property, so it's really important that I think the council considered moving forward with the motion that's presented by the zoning as, as is, which it basically will make that property conforming use for a mortgage company so that someone can buy that house, because we just had a resident actually move out of the house this week, and we're hoping that we can now list the property for an affordable house here in London, or Linden, excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Heidi Lechter, West Ralston Road. In reference to the ordinance 425 specifically creating an ordinance amending section 154 zoning, also known as housing-focused zoning amendments. The proposed zoning ordinance amendments areas are R3, R4, and R5 residential uses to include accessory dwelling units, three family dwellings and townhouses with the use of the Michigan Housing Readiness Grant, has the potential to create an influx of restricted income-restricted housing as well as multifamily housing on the only vacant land available for development in downtown Linden, as well as creating increased housing through use of accessory buildings on privately owned property with single-family homes already on the property. The utilization of the Michigan Housing Readiness Grant by the City of Linden can and likely will lead to developers applying for and utilizing grants specific to income-restricted housing in zones R3, R4, and R5 if these amendments are passed. Due to the nature of these zoning ordinance amendments, I ask the question, do any current city council members or sitting Linden board or commission members stand to benefit financially from these zoning ordinance amendments? As a resident of the City of Linden, I feel we are at risk of losing what is left of our small-town charm. If council votes to amend current housing-focused zoning amendments, I fear that that is what will happen. Our downtown is already severely congested due to recent housing developments just outside of Linden city limits. Adding this potential for housing will not bring customers to Linden businesses. Current traffic patterns are dangerous to both drivers and pedestrians. Lack of parking is detrimental to all of our local businesses. It's time for the City of Linden to focus on grants available to enhance and grow our local businesses and entice new business development in areas slated for more housing development, fix the parking, reduce the traffic issues, and make it desirable for new businesses to come to downtown Linden and stay in downtown Linden.
Thank you. Are there any further residents wishing to speak on this topic? Are you not seeing enough? Councilwoman Howard?
Um, I don't, I don't have any questions. I think Adam, sorry, I don't have any questions, questions or comments, because I think Adam did a great job with his letter. Thoroughly explains all the, all the changes, which are mainly just definitions and such.
Councilman Dick?
No, it's, planning commission had this for over a year in front of them, and the main things are changes in R1 and 2, there aren't. We took out high-use adult foster homes, which we could regulate, we couldn't do anything else because of state law. And we have to remember, just because we don't have it in our zoning ordinance, doesn't mean they can't build it here. That's not wrong.
Are you speaking directly?
No, I'm just, that's, that's a general, that's a general comment. Just because it's not in the ordinance, doesn't mean they can't do it. No, if it's zoned, if it's zoned multifamily, and they bring us a multifamily thing, we can look at it. Everything that's zoned for multifamily is all planned use development. It would all have to come back through planning, it has to come back to city council, it has to come back to the public hearings, all that type of thing. There's no, we have no one at our door that wants to build in Linden. As I discussed at our last meeting, any kind of multifamily residential right now would have to be subsidized, and I don't believe anyone on this board or the city is looking to subsidize any housing. Ann Arbor has spent $300 million on this, with a $44 million grant that they're putting into a $300 million project, which, you know, is crazy. But no, it's something that we have the intention of doing. And the townhomes is a definition. The ADU units, have you seen, are completely and totally restricted, indeed restricted. They can only be used by set family members. They can't rent them out, you can't sell them, you can't lease them, they have to be occupied by a family member or caregiver, and that is, you have to change your deeds to your property to reflect that. And it's only applicable to very few residents when you look at the actual restrictions. Has to have its own utilities, its own sewer, own water. It's pretty tight. It's just, we've considered it for over a year, it's been talked about for over a year. Just time to take a look.
Councilman Hicks?
I have no questions at this time, thank you.
Councilwoman Simon?
Um, I, I'd like to thank, um, Adam. Oh, he's not here. He did a stellar job on this. I mean, it's, it's very, very clear, and I really appreciate the time that we've brought it back and discussed it and really made it clear to everyone on council. Thank you for your comments, Brad, and I agree with Pam, there isn't, there isn't anything that I see that is an issue. We, we've just made some updates and, hey, we're heading into 2026, so good job.
Um, listening to the residents for over a year now, and seeing right now the traffic we have, the parking we have, the businesses that are trying to do a business with the mill going, I just want to, a little bit more information on this, if the, if the planning commission's had it for a year. I know we've had it here a couple of times. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I, the only part that I have is I went into a master plan, and some of the issues that I have been concerned about with this, passing this, are in fact the things that people were concerned about.
are in fact the things that people were concerned about. The congestion, and there was an accident in downtown today at Bridge Abroad. They are wanting, you know, to keep our small-town area, and I wonder, is that possible to do if we are doing townhomes? And so, I guess, I, those are the concerns that I have, because I don't see that it, in any, and I could go all day with that, but there's really no point in reading the whole thing, it's available online. I don't, I guess I don't see how it matches our master plan. Does anybody have anything further that they would like?
I'd like to, in consideration of the Planning Commission's recommendation adoption, move to adopt the housing-focused amendments to the City of London's zoning ordinance, chapter one fifty-four of the Code of Ordinances, as outlined in the amendment. Pact, backdated October twenty-third, twenty-five?
To his original meeting.
Oh, yes, to the original meeting.
And just to clarify, this is still under the review of attorney filter, so I just wanted to pick that here.
So do we need that review before we make a motion?
It's, the approval should be granted upon the review and acceptance of attorney filter.
Okay.
What would I hope is clarifying which, which sections, because eventually it needs to be into the ordinance format unless that, this is what was presented. Did you want each individual one, or did you want to sparse them out individually for approval?
I think you're right. Yeah, the whole package.
Okay, okay. I would just approve it, well, I would, I understand that motion, and if there's any changes, it would just be text-related, would it be substance-related?
Would you like to use the real?
Yes, please.
Armstrong?
No.
Seibert?
Yes.
Howitt?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Miller?
No.
Hicks?
No.
Motion ties three, three solar, four more, motion fails.
Okay, moving on to the managers' update.
Just a couple of things to update you guys on, it's been a busy couple of weeks, months, years. MTA, we're working with MTA to finalize shuttle services around the community that would service the community Thursday, Friday, Saturdays, and get them to the trolley routes in Sutton. So Tessa and I are working to try to finalize that, Don's working on signage, we're trying to finalize the stops, working with the business owners in areas where we will be, there'll be four stops. Ribbon cutting, it's in your packet, we have a ribbon cutting coming up for Hummels Tooth and Harlequins, left pathway groundbank, you already touched on that. More recently, we've been working through the Windows eleven, I think I've updated you guys on this before, but we're, the Windows eleven upgrade with Microsoft, so multiple devices at City Hall were not eligible, or able to make the upgrades, we had to do replacements, so that was what we spent a good majority of the day doing today. Also installed panic button at City Hall, just in the event of, you know, security issues, things like that. We had a successful dueling pianos night last week, appreciate all the staff and everyone that put that on, it was a great event. I know there was a successful ladies' night on Saturday, I was not able to attend, but I heard very positive feedback. So work to finalize the audit, obviously that was presented to you guys tonight, we're working on starting our budget processes in-house and doing, kicking that off in the new year. Other than that, we'll have too much, feel any questions you guys might have.
Any questions? For the council?
Are you going to open a backup for public council, or no?
I don't usually, but I, I can, I don't usually.
Can we go back to that agenda, you guys just voted down real quick? Do we have any standing up for? I, I just, you know, want to point out to you that you have a local service district, you currently have residential hoses in. And so, the current residential structures that are there, there's a line item that was struck to allow residential use for those existing properties, which would make it a conforming use. Does everybody on the board understand that, what that means? From a leasing and saleability and financing for a low-income buyer? So, do you want us to tear it down in the house and build a building there for like a dentist's office?
No, sir, but I'm sure we can, I mean, we can address that.
I mean, okay, that's totally fine, I mean, it's.
Madam Mayor, really quick too, I think it would be helpful for staff, and especially for Adam, for us to understand exactly what you guys are looking for, because as we communicated, we've not received any questions or comments back on anything, and at some point, we've got to, like, get this off the plate. So if you guys could provide some feedback specific to the ordinance, it would be really helpful for us, so to understand, so, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, just a point of information, like, how do you recommend the, someone comes in and buys a house in London, it's in that area, if it's for sale, because they can't? Do you not want the residents?
That is.
Would you rather keep it, it's a duplex, it's a duplex right now.
I would, I would like to have a conversation with you after the meeting.
Happy to do that.
Thank you.
I'd like to address this issue. This is crap, you guys are bringing up issues that you know are hot issues without a full board, that's not fair. This is the second issue where you've not had a full board, if you're gonna have something like this, I think you need to wait till you have a full board. That's just my opinion, but that's, it's not right.
Okay, so what I can say, Mrs. Wright, is that we did have, Councilman Link did send an email at the beginning of this week and asked that this was not on the agenda, prior to the agenda being made. And Councilwoman Miller was not supposed to be here, and she was able to be here, okay, and she, you know, she asked as well for this not to be on the agenda. So that is, you know, just a quick response, okay, because they were trying to be able to be here, but they had previously, she thought she had previously, but she's good now. But Link is not, because he had something previously scheduled, and, I mean, there, there was an email sent.
I get it, I mean, it's just.
Really, really quick, Madam Mayor, I'd like to address that too as well. At the last council meeting, it was not, it was brought up that this was going to be on the November meeting. At that time, the full board did not decide that that wasn't an option to put on an November meeting. It's really challenging for us as staff to react to each individual request, and so, for the purpose of the meeting tonight, we did put it on the agenda for you all to decide what you wanted to do with it. At any point, I think I ought to put in his memo that you guys could have postponed it. So you guys all have the option to do that, and that's why it was in front of you, and I think Krista explained pretty well the obligations and the issues that we have with the grant deadline for this project as well. And it's really challenging, if we're trying to wait for a full board to do any action, everyone's schedules are challenging, you guys, so you know how it goes.
You just voted to have more rental units in your community than you did have homeowners. That's very important. So more renters.
Again, after.
I just want people to realize what happened there.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think we do.
So what are our choices?
As far as, I, again, I'll just ask you guys to get us.
Because we have a forum, but if we can make a decision to let people get more information, I'm not opposed to that.
Sure, like I said, please provide specific feedback to staff and to Adam and I, so we can, we can address it and take care of the issues that you guys, or concerns that you might have, so.
Thank you.
And I'm available to discuss this, I know Brad makes himself available to discuss it as well, and Ellen's, well, first, Pam as well, if you'd like to talk about it.
Do you have a senior?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I think all the departments for their reports, we'll move on to council comments. Councilwoman Simon?
I'm excited about the left pathway ribbon, not ribbon cutting, but the events on Wednesday to open the work. The, the ladies' night out was a great, great success, I only did part of it, Brad, but I was able to do a little before, and I didn't register anything, but I did do some later, and so it was great. And thank you, Monica, for the dementia information, that's a, that's a workshop I know I'll sign up for. The, I wanted to bring up the, on the Metro Alliance, that there was, was a proposal at one time on the, on, to, to fund two lanes both ways in and out of London, on London Road, but that is no longer part of the agenda, it didn't get approved, so just want to let you know that we're okay. The, let's see here, and we have a Parkinson, well, we might have a Parkinson Rec meeting on November eighteenth, I just wanted to let you know, it'll be a, it's a, it's a good informational meeting, if you care to join us, it's right here.
What time is that, Pam?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Yeah, six o'clock, so. What?
Oh, I know it was tentatively November twentieth, but.
November twentieth, I'm sorry, I said the eighteenth, forgive me.
No, you're fine, we're also waiting on Adam's schedule, because I know he's been asked to come back and go through.
Right, so it may not happen, but just in case, be aware, it'll happen sometime this month. And that's it.
Councilman Dick?
I think anybody that came out for ladies' night on Saturday, it was quite interesting to see all the Helen Roper's running around town, a lot of red hair. And.
It was funny.
You said they took off the two lane into London, actually Genesee County's master plan calls for three lanes in and out of London in twenty, twenty forty-eight or so.
It was a tip-funded, tip-funded project that proposed and it just didn't get it.
It's on, they got it on the books, our commission has it on the books, their wish list for twenty forty-eight. But there's absolutely nothing we can do from an ordinance standpoint to restrict congestion in London. Penn Township is building around us in leaps and bounds, and we have no say in what they do. They don't listen to anything we send over and we recommend things to them.
They don't listen to residents either.
They, Penn Township, we can't, we have, there's about a thousand housing starts on London's borders. If we put this ordinance in, into play and every last inch of London was built out, it might be four hundred units at best. And we could never build out every last inch of London, because there are legacy property owners that are never going to sell, and a lot of wetlands. We've never actually put it to a site to see how much could be done, but that was the target number, if every inch, and that includes wetlands, was considered.
Councilman Hicks?
Just a couple of quick things, we do have a HDC meeting November nineteenth, Wednesday, next Wednesday, so if you get a chance, stop by there. Two, the new stop sign there for the walkway by City Hall, spot on, stands right out there, it really brings your attention to the, to the corner. Because before you go by through there, you wouldn't see little kids and stuff standing there, so like it, very much so like it. That's all, thank you.
Councilwoman Miller?
The trolley, thank you, thank you, thank you. I don't know when you're going to get the four stops, I am excited about that, and I know you'll be telling us.
I'm hesitant to give you a date.
No, it's okay, it's okay, it's okay, it's just so exciting to hear about. Thank you again for the audience, the great job you guys are doing. The, pardon my language. Doing pianos, I cannot tell you, I wish I would have been here to go to it, I know I've already heard about another dozen people that said they're ready. So we gotta bust out some walls or something, because this sounds great. Real quick on the vote tonight, I know, because I got an email, that Jerry did ask for this to be put up. And I was supposed to be going to Cancun, and I am, as soon as here, I'm going down to Detroit. But I think it's very important to listen to the city councilors too, we wanted this a full vote, it's very important for all of us to have a say. So that's the reason why I'm here, and I think that I can understand what this is all about. And I listened to MML today, which was a good one, so when it comes back up, or however it comes back to us, I'll be fully informed, thank you.
So I would like to start off, as a daughter and wife of a veteran, I appreciate so much the service that our men and women in uniform have done. I know this sacrifices firsthand, after watching my father and my husband miss multiple birthdays, multiple holidays. And so I really just wanted to take the time and thank our veterans going into Veterans Day. And everything I had to say about the vote at this time, I've said according to the master plan. That does not mean that it cannot be re-discussed, but there are certain areas of it that I'm not even open to negotiate. That's just where I'm at. So, and I haven't, I've been there, that has, I haven't moved since this started being talked, being talked about in February of two thousand and twenty-four. Just certain parts, so. With that being said, if anybody wants to know what those reasons are, I am more than happy to tell anybody, they can email me, they can call me, they can come after the meeting and talk to me. Thank you. There is no closed session, so do we have a motion?
I made the motion to close.
Meeting is adjourned at seven eighteen PM.